Good evening and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Kettering Planning Commission for Monday, June 2nd, 2025. The meeting will be televised as usual on Miami Valley Cable Council Cable Channel 6 and streamed live over the Internet at mvcc.net. It will also be recorded and available for later viewing on mvcc.net. I would like to thank the Miami Valley Cable Council for televising and taping tonight's meeting. Since this meeting is both audio and video taped to form a complete record for possible appeal to City Council and/or the courts, it is important that anyone who wishes to address the commission, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, and give their name and address for the record. The Planning Commission is a volunteer independent body appointed by the council, whose mission is to hear all bodies involved and subsequently make a motion to approve, deny, continue, or recommend the application. All action by the commission can be appealed to the City Council. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce the members of the Planning Commission who are present tonight. To your extreme right is Ken Lackey, our Assistant Secretary; next is Carol Fisher, our Secretary; she is followed by Troy Ervis, our Chairman, who has an excused absence tonight; I'm Ray Waskey, the Vice Chairman; and next to me is Don Rethman, City Planning Commissioner. Members of our city staff tonight are Tom Robillard, Director of Planning and Development, and Ryan Holmesy, City Planner. Under Old Business, our first item on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes of the commission's meeting of May 19th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 19th?
So moved.
Do you all have a second?
Second.
We have a second, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Well, we just had that, I'm sorry. We have to call the roll. Mr. Holmesy.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
And Mr. Waskey.
Yes. The minutes have been approved. Now, turning to New Business, the second item on tonight's agenda is a request for a conditional use approval for a multi-unit residential development at the northwest corner of the intersection of County Line Road and Research Boulevard, Planning Case 25-005. Now, this is a continuation of a public hearing from our last meeting of May 19th. And we will tonight start with staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. Excuse me. Before I start, I just want to let everyone know there's two different documents that should be sitting in front of you up there. The first is a single-page document that was a handout brought to the meeting tonight by one of the speakers later tonight. And then the other 15-page document is, it's just a copy of Attachment E, the Development and Design Guidelines document included in the staff report, because throughout my presentation, I'll be referring to a couple pages of this document that have some recommended requirements that staff deemed somewhat critical to discuss tonight. So that'll allow you to follow along a little bit easier, and if any changes are recommended to the document, then we can write them on the document as we go through the meeting. So, to give another overview of the project, the property in question, it's at the northwest corner of the intersection of County Line Road and Research Boulevard. The lot size is about 28 acres. The eastern portion of the property's been farmed for a number of years. The western portion is mostly a pond and some floodway land. And then the proposed use is a multi-unit residential, 13-plus units development. The existing zoning is a BP or Business Park, and the existing Pattern District is Suburban Business. Going over the floodplain information, the map on the screen now, the dashed black line is the rough outline of the property. The area hatched in red and blue is the floodway designation, and the area just in blue is the floodplain, Hundred Year Floodplain Fringe. So as a part of this development, if it gets approved, the applicant will be required to submit engineering drawings to prove compliance with our flood damage prevention ordinance. Some, a few quick pictures on the screen now, that is looking west toward the Sixth River Office Park, down east-west Research Boulevard. One item that I mentioned at the last meeting is that there is a pending project that will build a multi-use trail on the north side of east-west Research from the intersection of County Line Road and Research Boulevard, all the way over to the eastern side of the entrance to the Sixth River Office Park, which you can kind of see in the background there. This is a little further into the property, looking north. You can see the pond that I mentioned earlier, kind of on the left side there. This picture is taken from the bridge that runs over Spalding Road on the north side of the site, looking southeast onto the property. Here's another picture from Spalding, just looking wet or looking east down Spalding. And then, at the last meeting, we mentioned the Iron Horse Trail a number of times, and the importance of ensuring that adequate connections are made to that trail as a part of this project. So this picture is from Research, looking south while standing on the Iron Horse Trail. And then one more picture is looking southwest over the property, and you can see the agricultural use that was on, that is currently on the property. Again, I mentioned earlier, the entire property is zoned business, or I'm sorry, Business Park, which is the purple shaded area there. To the east is the border between Kettering and Beaver Creek. They have some planned Research Park zoning and some agricultural zoning directly to the east. And the proposed, the requested use is an allowable conditional use in the Business Park zoning district, so no rezonings are necessary for this project to be approved. I already mentioned that. And just to go over the Planning Commission's role in this process, the Planning Commission cannot waive minimum requirements through the conditional use process, but requirements can be made more restrictive. Some example items that can be imposed as conditions, you can impose that land be dedicated, reservation of land, creation of easements, increased setbacks, increased screening and landscaping requirements, development phasing, standards pertaining to traffic circulation, noise, lighting, and the protection of environmentally sensitive areas, and require that a development agreement be entered into by the applicant. Just some examples. Just to give a quick overview of the timeline since the last meeting, we had the public hearing on the 19th of May. At that meeting, the case was continued because there were a few items on the project that we didn't feel staff recommendations and the applicant were close enough on. We wanted some more information. Since that meeting up to today, we've gotten some updated plans that have made changes to the following items: finished material, designs of the open stairwells, foundation landscaping, landscaping around the water quality basin, parking lot landscaping, and streetscape landscaping, among a few other items. As we got those items, based on the new plans that we got, we, staff drafted a Development and Design Guidelines document, which is the document that I mentioned earlier that's sitting up on the counter there, and that was included as Attachment E in the staff report. And throughout the presentation, for the most part, this document just, a lot of the time, it states you have to do what you're proposing to do in the plan. There's a few areas where there's, where they're not, where what we're asking is not exactly in the plan for what we have, but for the most part, what they're proposing meets these requirements. In a few areas, I'll reference page numbers and go over some of those items that I'm assuming we'll be talking about in more detail tonight. So again, the proposal. Due to the floodplain and the pond, the development is focused on the east side of the property. There's nine structures, all three stories, plus a clubhouse. There's, the nine residential structures have 264 residential units, and they're surrounded by the 423 vehicular parking spaces. On the screen now is the general site plan. When it comes to the access to the site, the primary access point is from north-south Research Boulevard, kind of circled in red there, where there's an existing opening in the median. And then they're proposing a secondary vehicular access point from the east-west Research on the south side of the site. Except for emergency vehicles, the plan is for that to be right-in, right-out only. They'll have to work with the fire department and a few, and engineering on how to modify that existing median to allow emergency vehicles to drive over it. But those are the two vehicular access points proposed to the site, and those are unchanged from the last meeting. When it comes to pedestrian connections from the site to the surrounding pedestrian network, this is also unchanged from the last meeting. They're proposing three connections on the east side of the site to the Iron Horse Trail, and then one connection on the south side of the site to the proposed pedestrian path that is planned to be installed in that area as a part of an ODOT project shortly. The recommendation at the last meeting was to retain the proposed access points and to propose, and to install some shade trees to provide shade to those areas. We recommended that they, when I get to the streetscape landscaping slide, they're proposing to install 15 additional trees from what's shown on the plan with the locations of those pending, based on easements and ODOT construction. We recommended that they use at least some of those trees and put them along the pedestrian path to provide some more shade, and we would count those as streetscape trees as well. And the other item that we recommended is that more bicycle racks be added to the site. The applicant is proposing to meet the minimum standard in the zoning code, which is two racks per building. We're okay with them meeting that minimum requirement and not forcing the installation of new bike racks unless they, the ones they install are always full. But the assumption is for a lot of people who have an expensive bike, they'll bring it inside their unit versus park it outside, and the outside spaces are more for people who are visiting. So we're okay with the request on the part of the applicant. One item that came up after the meeting that is different from what we talked about before deals with internal pedestrian connections from the buildings to the parking lot in the, on the site. This is highlighted in, on Page 4 of the Development and Design Guidelines, and the red circles are the areas where on the current plan, there aren't any proposed pedestrian connections that would connect those access points to the building to another paved surface. Now, there are some challenges with the site, some easements, easements on the east side, and then some topographic changes on the west side, but in the Development Guidelines Report, the staff recommendation was to, was to install pedestrian connections from all doorways from the buildings to the paved areas of the site. And I know that'll be an item of discussion later. The building setbacks are unchanged from the last meeting. These meet the minimum requirements of the zoning code for the suburban business Pattern District, and also the general locations of the buildings are also unchanged from the last meeting. There's a few retaining walls that we requested that they provide the finished materials for as a part of their future applications, and these are also unchanged from the last meeting. The stormwater management plan for the project is unchanged from the last meeting. As I mentioned before, since they're in the floodplain, they have to create that compensation basin at the northeast corner of the site. On the north side of the site, they have to grade some of those areas up to raise the buildings at least one foot above the base flood elevation, and then on the south side, they are, will be grading some of those portions of the site down. The landscaping plan, there have been quite a few changes to this, and I'll go over them item by item. The streetscape plan, the streetscape tree plan on the project before for the last meeting, this is what they proposed, and today, the proposed change, they just took the number 12 and made it 15, where they're going to add those 15 additional trees where they can as a part of the future submittals. These are the trees that we recommended. They use, at least some of them, to provide shade to those pedestrian connections. So that meets the comments that we provided before. When it comes to the parking lot landscaping, the recommendation at the last meeting was to add some more internal parking lot trees. The next submission they gave us did add additional trees, highlighted in red. They added one additional peninsula on this side because that was one of the long expanses of parking that wasn't broken up by landscaping at all. So they met that comment that we provided at the last meeting. When it comes to the parking lot screening, from the right away, their last plan that they gave us appeared to meet the requirements. On the west side, they have to provide a slightly taller hedge from, to screen those parking areas from the eastern, from the western side of the property, and they met that comment. Due to the grade change here between the parking lot surface and where they're going to plant the shrubs, they swapped the former plantings they proposed with a taller, with a taller shrub. Same with this red line right here, so that, that portion of the project met our last For the foundation plantings at the April, at the May 19th meeting, we just recommended that they retain the proposed shrub and perennial plantings because they far and above exceed the minimum requirements of the zoning code, and that they, there were a few buildings that didn't meet the Group B tree requirement. We just asked them to meet that requirement, and they did do that. However, going back to the item of the, regarding the open stairwells, one of the comments that staff recommended to help soften those open stairwells is to add, where space permits, a foundation tree on each side of the sidewalk that connects from the open stairwell to the parking lot. And on, in some buildings, they don't have room to do that, but in most of them, they do. So we have an updated recommendation, which might add a couple more foundation trees here and there. And going along with that, the ground-mounted utility units are not super big. I believe they're about 28 inches tall, give or take, plus the curb that they'll sit on. In the Development Guidelines Report, Pages 9 and through 10, an updated comment, as we recommended, on the highly visible elevations to provide an immediate screen in addition to the landscaping. And what we included in the Development Guidelines Report were a few examples of an area that where just shrubs are used, which that wouldn't work on the front elevations, and then an example where they, a different developer used just a fence around the units. The entryway trees, this is one of the areas where we had requested a tree-lined entry. At the south side of the site, they had already provided that at the last meeting. At the primary entrance on the east side of the site, we asked that they add some trees to the north side of that entryway, and the next plan that we got did that. So if you look through the Development Guidelines Report, we included screenshots of this plan and just said, "Follow the plan that you've given us." When it comes to the compensation basin, since that's 16 feet deep, and again, it's a, a plan to be a dry water quality pond in a compensation basin, we had asked that they provide some screening around that since it's at a highly visible corner, and the next plan that we got met that comment. So we included this in the Development Guidelines Report, so this, this, the comments on this item were met by the plans that we got following the meeting on the 19th. Now, presenting the architectural items, this part of the presentation might be a little bit confusing, so if there's any questions, let me know. But this was a big item of discussion at the last meeting, and there are several comments in the Development and Design Guidelines Report, but a lot of the focus of the last meeting and the staff report is this, this code requirement in the Kettering zoning code for Section 1137. O2.B., I'm sorry, dot O2 dot 2 dot B dot 2. And it deals with architecture. If you're building a residential development in a non-residential zoning district, we want the architecture to be somewhat consistent with what's around, the Surrounding Code compliant architecture in the same Pattern District. So the section actually reads, "The architectural style, colors, and materials shall be similar in character to the predominant architecture of nearby structures in the same Pattern District." And at that meeting, our last meeting, the recommendations were, reduce the amount of fiber cement siding on the buildings on all facades to be no more than 30% of the finished materials. And then there were the open stairwells, and the recommendation was to enclose the stairwells. We had an asterisk on that bullet point because we were awaiting more information from the applicant. We got that information after the meeting, which I'll share in a moment. And then the two other comments were, retain the use of aluminum window frames, awnings, and handrails, and also retain the large windows on the buildings, and they've, they've done that. Sorry. This should say today, but the new recommendations, and I'll expand on this in the next couple slides, are to reduce the amount of fiber cement used on the buildings to no more than 40% of the finished materials on all sides. We did get some updated elevations that reduced the fiber cement a fair amount. When it comes to the open stairwells, include design elements for the open stairwells that just make them look, dress them up a little bit and help conceal them from the surrounding properties. And then the same comments about the aluminum window frames and the large windows. So, going along with that code section that I quoted before, the goal is to look at what's around in Research Park and match that character as best you can when it comes to materials, visual character, and things of that nature. So on the left is Reynolds &amp; Reynolds, on the right is the Silvita Building. And then on this page, on the left, is the Resonetics Building, which is predominantly tilt-up concrete. And then the building on the right, that is, I refer to it as the 1900 Founders Building. It's predominantly glass and tilt-up concrete. So at the last meeting, I went over the proposed elevations of the clubhouse. We didn't get any updated elevation information about this structure because the main focus was on the apartment buildings, but on the screen now, the green outlines are the aluminum awnings and the brick accents. The rest is fiber cement of differing designs. This is one of the 24-unit buildings where they, that they, that we went over at the last meeting. The green outlines there are the brick accents near the entrances and the, you can see the open stairwells and the aluminum railings and awnings. The new elevation that we got added a fair amount more brick to the elevation. It retained the large windows and the aluminum railings and the awnings. The open stairwells remain, but on the next slide, I'll explain. On this design, they were going for a more faux, a faux balcony-type design where they added, they kept the railings and that matched the balconies, and then they added some accents on either side that look more like the columns that'll be next to the balconies versus the former design, which had just the siding continuing on either side of the openings. So again, the status, the stairwells are still open. The fiber cement on this elevation, based on a rough measurement, is about 43%, which is close to the staff recommended 40%. The fiber cement share on the actual side elevations is much higher. And after the meeting, one of the presenters mentioned that we would be getting some updated plan, some updated examples on how to possibly help conceal the open stairwells, and this is the first design that we got. Essentially, instead of a railing, you'd have a brick wall that would go up, and you have kind of a faux window above that. And then you would have a shutter looking kind of like this to help provide, to help shield it. Based on discussions internally, we weren't crazy about the shutter idea because it doesn't terribly match the architecture of the building, but we did like the idea of going for kind of a faux window design. And then the other design that was on the elevation I shared before is the more faux balcony design. So instead of the brick wall here, you have the railing and then the columns on either side that kind of look more like the columns on the balcony. And they came about that design because we shared a couple, excuse me, we shared a couple examples of open stairwells that we had found in different buildings throughout Ohio. This is one example, and obviously, it's a completely different architectural style, but they went with the faux window design, which I thought looked pretty good. And then this is not the clearest picture ever, but this is another one example where they went with more of the balcony design. And this was the kind of the inspiration for the last, the, the most recent plan that we got, which is right here. Based on discussions with the applicant, we think we can work with these. They're a start. We wanted to share those ideas with the Planning Commission tonight and discuss them. But on Page 14 of the Development and Design Guidelines Report, the section relating to the open stairwells, we listed several proposed requirements to keep the stairwells open. The one I mentioned earlier is that where space permits, add at least one additional foundation tree on each side of the entrance. For the walls that kind of go, that are inside of the open stairwells, make sure to finish those with a material that matches the visual character of the front elevation. This is just one example. What we meant by that is we don't want a brick, horizontally oriented brick on the front, and then just a plain, smooth concrete wall on the inside. So this is an example where they, horizontal siding, they went hor, they took horizontal siding into the enclosure, into the stairwell as well. Number three, we, and this is already met by the plans, include canopies on the ground floors, elevations of all sides of the building at the access points. Again, we weren't, we don't want to require the screens up front, but we put a point in there about trying to design the openings in a way that screens can be accommodated in the future, if they're needed. And the other item that we think makes a lot of sense is to utilize more than one design throughout the site. If you look at the floor plan, or if you look at the footprints of the buildings, in some cases, the entrances are kind of inset from the front, not by a lot, but by a few feet, and then in some cases, they stick out more. So it might be possible to use the faux window design in cases where they're inset, and then use the faux balcony design in cases where they project. But either way, having more than one design could possibly add more interest to the buildings. And we're always open to other ideas because this is a relatively new concept in the City of Kettering. They're more common than I had thought based on the research that I did, but we're open to hearing other ideas as well. And one other item that I know will be discussed this evening that was included on Page 13 of the Development and Design Guidelines Report deals with the undersides of the balconies. In the, in the document that's in front of you this evening, the recommendation was to enclose the undersides of the balconies to get rid of the unfinished look. The alternative proposal provided by the applicant is to finish them, to stain the wood, stain the wood with a color that matches the column trim and the trim board of the, of the balconies. And on the screen now is an example of a different vision development where that's what they did. And as long as it has a dark color, which the proposal today does have, I do think that that's something that staff would be okay with versus the full-fledged enclosures. The last item deals with site lighting. At the last meeting, we had an example of the proposed balcony and patio fixture, a little more residential than what we wanted to see. We asked them to use a more modern fixture, fixture for the portion of balcony lights, and then they had composite light poles to the parking lot. We requested more information on that and to explore replacing those poles with a material like aluminum that's a little, that lasts longer. And they did provide a light fixture that is acceptable. The composite poles, we weren't, we didn't get any more information. So in the, in the Design Guidelines, Guidelines Report, we included a few pictures of patio, of potential pa, example patio fixtures, but we're okay with what they're proposing here. We think that meets that comment. When it comes to the light poles, we requested they just be aluminum or steel, but logically, they're going to be, they'll be aluminum as a recommendation. Okay. So the last part of my presentation is I'll go through the U-specific standard Okay, so the last part of my presentation is I'll go through the use-specific standards and the general conditional use requirements and go over the updated comments that staff provided throughout the report. Again, the entire property is a zoned business park. The proposed use is an allowable conditional use. So the use-specific standards contained in Section eleven thirty-seven dot O two dot two of the Kettering zoning code. The first is that such multi-unit dwellings shall be located on lots at least ten acres in area and shall contain at least two dwelling units. This is met. Number two is the general conditional use standards, which I'll get into later. The use-specific standards for apartment developments or residential developments in non-residential zoning districts. The first one is that you have to provide common areas. Such developments shall include readily accessible common areas that are usable by residents and visitors of the development. These may include playgrounds, pedestrian walkways, and other usable areas. This requirement is far and above exceeded by the development proposal that we have today. The next one is the one I mentioned earlier, and that deals with architecture. And that is that the architectural style, colors, and materials shall be similar in character to the predominant architecture of nearby structures in the same pattern district and in conformance with the current standards of Chapter eleven forty-nine, which is the architectural chapter of the Kettering zoning code. And nothing in this section shall permit a violation of those architectural standards. The staff response to that item is that the, the proposed building materials and the just plain open stairwells are two of the biggest items of discussion on the plans. Since the last public meeting, public hearing on this item on May nineteenth, the applicant has made modifications to the architecture of the building, including swapping out some of the fiber cement for brick and modifying the stairwell openings to appear more as faux balconies. During the last staff presentation, the recommendation was no more than thirty percent of the finished materials on the building facades be fiber cement, which is not met by the latest iteration of the plans. We also recommended that the stairwells be enclosed. Staff is open to recommending approval of a higher percentage of fiber cement. The, the document that went out recommended forty percent, and the open stairwells, provided that the other site design and architectural-related comments are met by the project. As I mentioned before, the shapes of the buildings comply with this standard, so this requirement is conditionally satisfied. Now the general conditional use standards. Standard A, the proposed conditional use shall comply with all applicable regulations of the zoning code. As I noted earlier, the planning commission does not have the authority to waive or reduce minimum requirements in the zoning code, so before any zoning permits can be approved for this development, the plans must at least comply with the minimum standards plus any conditions imposed by the planning commission. There are a few components of the plan that do not comply with the minimum standards of the zoning code or the general conditional use standards. However, staff is recommending several conditions meant to ensure future plan submissions comply with both the minimum standards and the recommended development guidelines contained in Attachment E. And assuming the project meets the recommended conditions, then this standard will be satisfied. So this requirement is now conditionally satisfied. Standard B, the proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it's located and shall have, shall have no, no more adverse effects on the health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood, or shall be no more interest to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would any other use permitted by right within the same district. In making such a determination, consideration shall be given to, number one, the location, architectural design, type, and height of buildings or structures. Number two, the, the type and extent of landscaping and screening for the site. And number three, whether the proposed use is consistent with any policy of the comprehensive plan that encourages mixed uses and/or densities. Again, the plans have come a long way since the last meeting. The main areas of concern at the last meeting were that the design of the use would not conform to the character of the neighbor, of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. Again, this is largely due to the extensive use of fiber cement siding on the buildings. However, as stated previously, the applicant has made progress in bringing the plans closer to compliance with both the minimum standards of the zoning code and Attachment E. Provided the recommended conditions are met by future plan submissions, this requirement will be satisfied. And the second point of this standard, the proposed use will have, will not have more adverse effects on the health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the neighborhood, and it would be no more interest to property or improvements in the neighborhood than would be any other use permitted by right in the same zoning district. So this requirement is conditionally satisfied. Standard C, adequate utilities shall be provided. Montgomery County Environmental Services will have to review and approve the plans as the development plans are more formalized in order to confirm that adequate sewer, water and sewer capacity is present to serve the use. I know the applicants have been speaking with MCES throughout their design process, so this is not expected to be an issue. So this requirement is likely satisfied. Requirement D, adequate measures shall be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to prevent traffic hazards and to prevent traffic congestion on public roads. Kettering's engineering department has been involved in the early reviews of this project and has stated that the, that the surrounding roadway network can support the additional traffic from the development. When I get to the recommendation, there is also a condition recommended that deals with roadway modifications. So this requirement is satisfied. Letter E, the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. Again, as mentioned at the last meeting, if this ever becomes a problem, then a resident is engaging in some sort of illegal activity that would violate the zoning code and probably the lease agreements as well. So this requirement is satisfied. If an issue were to come up, we would treat it as a violation of the zoning code, but we don't foresee anything coming up. Letter F, the proposed use shall not injure the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. The proposed use will have no such negative impacts, so this requirement is satisfied. Standard G, the proposed use shall not impede the orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses that are permitted within the zoning district. If the proposed development, including the building design, is approved as submitted, the extensive use of fiber cement would open the door for similarly, similarly designed residential developments, which would diminish the orderly development and redevelopment of land in the Research Park, particularly future residential developments within the business park. However, staff feels that the recommended conditions and the design guidelines included in Attachment E, provided they are met by future plan submissions, will allow the project to meet this standard. So this requirement is also conditionally satisfied. Standard H, the proposed, I'm sorry, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. No such negative impacts will occur due to this development, so this requirement is satisfied. And finally, the public interest and welfare supporting the proposed use shall not, I'm sorry, shall, shall be sufficient to outweigh the individual interests that are adversely affected by the establishment of the proposed use. The proposed use will have no such adverse effects that must be outweighed, so this requirement is satisfied. That was a lot, and I know there'll be more discussion as the applicant and others come up to speak. But that concludes the staff presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Holmesy. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I have a question on page fifteen of our handout here. It would be a five D. It says the screens, design openings in a way that should screens be needed in the future for either screening or pedestrian protection. Screens can be installed in or around the opening. So that's saying if there, at some point, that doorways would need, need either gates or something at the doorways. Who would be the determiner of the need for that, for pedestrian protection or screening?
That's a great question.
It seems kind of open-ended there.
That, that's a good question. That was an item that we didn't want to torpedo the screens entirely. We wanted to keep that open as an option, but we also wanted to give the applicant a chance to propose alternatives that don't use the screens because we just didn't think that they would be, at least the first design we got, we didn't think it architecturally matched the building. Now, if you don't, if you want to strike that standard, we can do that this evening and roll it, it would really be rolled into Standard F, which would now be E, which deals with alternative designs. But the way that's written now, zoning administrator would make that determination. But I can understand the concern with that because it's somewhat, it is somewhat arbitrary.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of open. No, I'm not suggesting we strike it, I guess.
I mean, I, I think I had the same sort of read on that. It was like the project's built out, and then eighteen months after that, somebody's going to say, hey, we now need screens or something, which I think would be really problematic because once it's built, it's built and like that. So, but if we're suggesting that screens are an option for them to evaluate between now and whenever their construction documents are done, which I'm assuming is on the calendar already, then I'm okay with whether we need to tweak that language or whatever, but giving them an option to explore something else perhaps.
Yeah, I mean, it could be rolled, again, it could be rolled into alternative ideas just because that's the more open-ended item that we didn't want to say what we showed you tonight are the only options. But these are some ideas that we think dress those openings up pretty well. And if a modification is going to be made to this document, I have a draft template for the motion on how to do that.
All right.
So, and that, that goes for any, like the balcony enclosures and any other items that you're interested in changing. We'd have to print it off on the fancy paper and get signatures later, but I have a template that we can follow.
Have any other comments or questions?
Not at this time.
I, I did have one question about open stairwells. In, in page just before that, page fourteen, we talk about open stairwells. Plain open stairwells are not a design feature supported by the planning commission. However, the section includes several design features that will allow planning commission to support such designs on the buildings. So we're giving them the option still to have open stairwells, is that right?
Yeah, the, the plan that we have tonight, all the stairwells remain open.
Okay.
There's no enclosing them.
I'm looking at the layout, actually on the, the PowerPoint slide you have up right now, and it looks to me that the vast majority of the open stairwells would have, would be facing, would be open for east-west winds. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll give you a little story. When I was living in Baltimore, I noticed that many, the apartment complex I was in had open stairwells. They were really nice, but they generally faced east-west winds because Baltimore gets really some severe winter weather up there off the coast, and those east-west, or east-west winds carry a lot of rain, snow, and ice. And the stairwells get really slippery. So the, so they had their open stairwells open in the east-west direction, not, I'm sorry, north-south direction, not east-west. I guess my question is, is that something that you had any conversation with the applicant about, or if that's even feasible?
Well, the ma, the way the buildings are designed, it's not, it wouldn't be feasible to modify the stairwell locations, just the way that they're designed.
Yeah. It was just a question because, looking at the layout, it doesn't look like it may be, maybe for a couple of buildings, maybe, maybe feasible, but some are not.
Ryan, within the report, I believe there was a, some floor plans? Because I don't think we have stairs right on the very edge, do we? Stairs?
There's, yes, one of the exhibits had some floor plans. Let me, I remember seeing some somewhere.
Was it on one of those attachments in here?
I believe it was this one. Yeah. One of the exhibits. Let me, so this was included, this was exhibit three of the staff report. This is the twenty-four unit building. Based on this, the stairs are kind of closer to the center. And the, excuse me, the, I believe this is the thirty-six unit building. It shows the central stairwell gets a little bit closer to the edge, but on either side, it's kind of in the center of the, of the building. But I, I'm not in, I would allow them to speak a little bit more to that design.
I just wanted to point that out because the image that was shown is sort of not a good example. I think the stairs are like on the very sort of outside face, so I think would be much more impacted by the, the adverse winds and stuff coming through. I mean, you would still get them coming through, but not as much driven stuff on those surfaces.
And that comment was one of the reasons we didn't want the screen idea completely abandoned because that would help a little bit, potentially do that on the, on the west sides of the buildings, I don't know. But that was one, because in, in the document, it included pedestrian protection, should the screens be needed in the future for pedestrian protection or screening. That was one of, it was very hard to word though, but that was one of the, that was one of the items that we had a concern about. But I mean, there, there's plenty of these types of developments throughout the state up in Columbus, and I can let them speak a little bit more to how they operate.
Fair enough. Maybe, maybe the applicant has something to say about that.
Yeah, I, I would, rather than me talking or Tom talking, I'd rather have them give some information.
Right. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Would you please come to the microphone and give your name and address?
Good evening. Scott Morgan with Vision Development, twenty-nine thirty-five Kenny Road, Columbus.
Thank you. Do you have any comments to add to our discussion?
I do, and I appreciate it. First, with the open stairwell, it seems to be the, the main item at this point in the meeting. You are correct. Obviously, with, with the open breezeway, you do get, get the winds, you get the snows, you get the rain. I don't know, if you look, the dimensions from the face of the building back into the enclosed area ranges anywhere from, I think it was almost twenty feet on the twenty-four unit building. And then the center stairwell there, I can't really see that dimension, but it's over ten feet.
Ten feet.
It's ten.
So it does provide, you know, in terms of snow and rain, there is kind of a canopy that is far beyond the bottom landing of the stairs. And whenever that, those type of situations or storms occur, especially snow, freezing rain, ice, we do have our, our in-house property management group will be taking over the site from our construction group. And it is a, you know, onsite management group that, that does take care of any type of shoveling, icing, leaf blowing, anything that maintenance-wise, that we, they need to take care of or we need to take care of in order to ensure, you know, the, the best experience, the best safety practices for the, for the people who are living there.
Okay, so that's part of your routine maintenance?
It is.
Property maintenance procedure.
First thing in the morning, they do the walks of every building.
Right.
And throughout the day as well. I think that was the only question. I think that was the only question, the audience, you know, that is something that, you know, we did bring to the table as a possibility and we'll continue to work with Ryan and his group on that, if that's something that's, you know, we want to pursue.
Question for you. I know one of the recommendations was, I believe, 40% or less of the cementitious siding on all sides, I believe. Is that going to be an issue for you guys to achieve?
It is doable. It comes down to the economics.
Understand.
We are expanding the sizes of our windows than what we typically do on these buildings. Definitely a lot more landscaping, which I'm not opposed to, but probably about twice as much landscaping that we typically do on our properties. We're buying a piece of land that basically we're going to be able to utilize one-third of it. So, there's just a lot of minutia working there where we're willing to work to give you the best product that we can give you that satisfies everybody across the board.
Understand.
So, yes, we're open to continue the discussions on that.
I guess my question might have the same answer. The alternative ideas on the stairwells about the balcony design or the window designs for the upper levels, is that something that, it appears that that's not going to be a condition of this approval, is that correct? But it's listed as an alternative idea, so I'm, is that something that?
That design document, that design document, the plans that come in to get permits need to meet the requirements of this document.
But it says alternative ideas, so is that, is that a requirement?
Well, that was in there just so that we didn't, like, we didn't, we put a couple examples in here. If they come in with something that's different but meets the general idea of these requirements, then staff can approve it as acceptable. They don't need to propose alternative ideas, that's just there that they can.
Okay. Are those ideas that you will consider?
I like the idea of shaking it up, you know, having a couple stairwells that look like the balconies and maybe another stair, the third stairwell in the building that looks completely different or morphs into more of the look of that particular section of the building, but still is an open breezeway in order to satisfy the code requirement that needs to be constructed under. In terms of the opening, we have to have a certain square footage of opening at the ends of both breezeways in order to stay within the few code ranges that we need to stay in on this product.
Yeah, and just to show, I believe the minimum opening requirement is 35 square feet, and this opening right here is about 33. And then there's openings between the slats, so that's about as enclosed as it's going to be. But if it's designed in the right way, we think that we can come up with something that fits in with the building. And the concern about the weather coming in from the west, it could be possible to have screens on some of the west sides of the building because those are the less visible ones from the street. So, that proposal that they gave us, I'm sorry, I can't remember where. I talked too long, so it takes me forever to find where the slide is. Like, this design right here includes the screens that hide quite a bit of it. It could be possible to work some of those into the west side. Maybe a different design of the screen, but.
I mean, I think what the note talks is about a Bahama decorative shutter, so those you actually can sort of see through horizontally, they provide protection sort of down versus I think what's being shown on the right-hand side is actually a bit of a canopy.
After that was sent to us, there was like an asterisk, like, this is just the idea, we're not saying a Bahaman shutter.
Okay.
It's just the idea.
Right, I mean, it's another option, but I mean, in terms of height and amount of open area.
I think the vein thing is some type of perforation or something to continue that airflow out to a certain angle when, as far as that oning and its pitch, stay within code, building code that is, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this topic? Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Christine McDaniel at 2837 Comanche Drive here in Kettering. And I just got really nervous, so, hi.
You're fine, just breathe.
Give me a chemistry classroom, a bunch of teenagers, I'd be a lot better. So, I've lived in Kettering for about 30 years, and I appreciate Kettering's city government history of thoughtful planning, and that's been one of the reasons why we stayed in this area, so I want to say that. My concern, Mr. Holmesy said that, you know, the ruling about preventing traffic hazards and not endangering the public safety any further was satisfied, and that's where my concern lies because I bike commute to work nearly every day along that road, and I know many other people who bike along that road. And with Reynolds and Reynolds just across the street, every cyclist I know has had multiple close calls with cars. I have witnessed a dad with a baby jogger nearly get hit by somebody turning right on red because a person turning, a driver turning right on red looks left, and then they gun the car to the right. They don't see pedestrians or cyclists coming from the right. So, I gave you a list of a lot of things that I found in a fairly quick Google search that could help. And I don't know how many of them are things that you can ask the developer to do or things that you can do. I'm unfamiliar with your area of control, but there seem to be a lot of things that can be done. First of all, there is no citywide regulation that allows bikes to use a crosswalk. A kid was hit in front of Reynolds and Reynolds while he was riding his bike across a crosswalk, and the driver was not cited because there's no law against it. The kid ended up being okay, the bike was totaled, but having a law that says bikes can use crosswalks would help. And then everything else seems to be about speed and slowing things down. We made roads wider, drivers feel more comfortable, they go faster, they have more, there are more accidents. When we narrow those roads, and I've been in other apartment building developments where the roads are narrow and twisty, it's a lot safer because cars don't feel as, drivers don't feel as comfortable and they slow down. Raised crossings, if the multi-use path is raised up to the level of a sidewalk, making kind of like a speed table, then cars will slow down to go over it. That's something, right at that intersection where the entries meet those multi-use paths, having that speed table there would really, really help. Cars would slow down, cyclists would be more visible, kids on scooters would be more visible. You're going to have a lot of traffic, a lot more traffic here with all the extra people that you're going to have. Other things, no right turn on red. For Kettering, wide, anytime the multi-use bike path, multi-use path hits an intersection, that would be fantastic. And there's a lot of other things. Setting the stop bar back, it's a bit of pain. Everybody ignores stop bars. I'm not sure how helpful that would be, but you can do a lot of things. There are protected intersections, compact corners, narrowing streets, a lot of things just to slow cars down and allow everyone time to see who's around them and to help make those judgments. So, I shortened that a lot because I'm nervous, but that's basically what I had to say. So, thank you for your attention. Appreciate your work.
Thank you for your input. And would you mind sending that list to Mr. Holmesy?
Oh, he hasn't.
I have it.
Yes.
Oh, you have it?
And I'll send you the links to.
Oh, this is the?
Yes.
The handout we already got?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was going to ask Mr. Robelard, when the state of Ohio legalized right turn on red, that was done statewide, wasn't that? Do you remember back that time, that far back?
I cannot answer that one.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I haven't.
So, that was governed by state law, I believe. I don't know how much cities can contradict that. Maybe they have some leeway, I don't know.
Yeah, they can have intersections with no turn on red. I mean, you run across them all the time.
Yeah, but citywide, I don't know.
Yeah, I think cities can control that.
But thank you. Anybody else? Here's your chance. Okay. Staff recommendations?
Yeah, I can get, before I go over that. Before I go over that, I wanted to ask real quick if there were any changes that we wanted to make, the planning commission wanted to make to that design document. Because the, like the balcony example I gave earlier, the way it's written now, that's a requirement. If we want to allow the staining, the bottoms, the same color as the balcony columns and skirt boards of a dark color, we can, we can do that tonight. I have a template that would allow that. And there's a, there's a few other items that I got some feedback a couple of hours ago from the applicant that I don't think the changes, if they need to make any, would be considered major when it comes to the conditional use process. But again, the way that the motion is written today, if they make any of these changes, they might have to come back for a public hearing. And that deals with the internal pedestrian connections, there's some easement and topographic challenges.
Yeah, I want to talk more about that.
Okay.
At any rate, so at least that particular one, it was one that I was, should have brought up when the applicant was here.
Okay.
Yeah, let's talk about the internal pedestrian connection. So, it looks like it's mostly on what, at least from the car driver person living in the apartment complex where you sort of, everything's driven from the parking lot side, people accessing all their apartments. Sort of everywhere that we have these through breezeways, then we're saying we want connections off those sides to wherever, where if you turn left versus right, you could get there out of the parking lot side of the building. If there was a, sort of a little pathway around the pond or something that, you know, was a developed thing, I would see, you know, having a connection to that, now whether that would need to be paved. And I'm not suggesting this right now because obviously things are going where they are. I guess I'm just not sure that, I guess, what are we trying to accomplish with those?
The intent behind that was if you look at developments throughout Kettering, that's generally just how we've, how they've been, apartments have been built throughout town. Normally, if there's a primary access point to the building that can be used by residents, there's a paved connection to the, usually the parking lot at least. I'm not aware of any, I mean, I didn't do a comprehensive review of the city, but I'm not aware of any that don't provide that. And the idea was just to, if there's an issue that where one of the entrances is not accessible, and that's the one that has the paved connection, that if you go out the other door and you might be in a wheelchair or something, you at least have somewhere you can go to get away from the building. That was the idea behind it. But I wanted to talk about that a little bit because I got a little bit more feedback from that this afternoon. But that was the idea behind that requirement.
Okay. So, yeah, so I mean, I can see it two ways. So, one is obviously having access to the area and whether, you know, it would need to be a required accessible exit access. Then two, I mean, especially if you've got the bike pass, the multi-use pass going through there, I mean, it's also then sort of a, is it a safety thing as well in terms of if most of the activity's on the parking lot side, who's coming in? And I just keep looking at it, it's sort of like the back door. So, I mean, it's like.
Yeah, relative to the parking lot.
Right.
The back door, yeah.
And once again, you know, shame on me for, I drove my car here today, didn't ride my bike. But, yeah, I mean, it's just, I just wanted to have discussion because obviously this sort of came in with the report and I looked at it and then I did not bring it up earlier. So, I don't know if any of the other commissioners care, have a point of view, or, and obviously we can let the applicant address these as well, but I don't know, if you've got more information, then enlighten me.
I just wanted them to have the opportunity to speak on it if they want to.
Come on down.
Scott Morgan, excuse me, Scott Morgan again, 2935 Kenny Road.
One time to go.
We understand what Ryan's asking for. What we're working with is, as you were saying, the majority of the people who are going to be living in these buildings are either going to be coming down the stairs or out their ground floor level. One, probably going to their car. Two, going to get mail. Three, going to the pool to hang out. Or four, go to the clubhouse and grill some steaks or burgers or whatever over there. So, really, the majority of the foot traffic is going to be, as you said, towards the center of the property, or i.e. the service walks that are provided, at least around all the, around both, all sides of the buildings, if it's an interior building like there on the south end. The ones that are up on the screen now with the circles on the perimeter of the site, kind of the, what we're running into on the east side of the site with those three buildings is if we place service walks there, which can be done. However, to truly do it right and expand that service walk the full length of those buildings, we'll be extending out into some utility easements, which down the road could, you know, if anybody has to get in there to do any type of repairs or whatnot, you know, that cost would be paid for again by us as opposed to the group that comes in and rips the walks out. On the west side of the property, essentially as, probably about five feet or so past the face of that building, the grade, the downslope grade towards the floodway becomes very prominent, which will, again, as we were talking earlier, that can be done. But preferably, we would like to utilize the cost to build retaining walls and put railings up because of the steep drop-off, we'd like to focus on those dollars somewhere else on the property. Really, the only building that, none of those conditions, easements or retaining wall, at least along, well, we already have a retaining wall over there on that 24, I'm sorry, on the 12-unit building on the north side of the site. That one breezeway can probably, we could do a sidewalk connection there. But basically, someone noted, providing connections to the Iron Horse Trail, we've provided one there at the right in, right out on the south, another one, actually, and three along North-South Research Boulevard with service walks connected to the buildings throughout the property for the tenants to get to the trail. If they lived in those buildings along North-South Research Boulevard, they would walk out of those breezeways onto a sidewalk and then just down a grassy hill and across a swale to get to the Iron Horse Path, Iron Horse Path, so. and then just down a grassy hill and sw, and across a swale to get to the, uh, Iron Horse Path, Iron Horse Path, so... We feel the interior, uh, walkways, uh, interior, uh, walkability system is, um, is adequate.
Thank you.
We, we would provide... Oh, and on top of that, there, there is some, uh, again, going back to landscaping, um, probably to try and stay maybe, try and stay somewhat out of the easement, we're not going to clear it all the way. Uh, we'd probably have to look at reducing landscaping bed depths, uh, reducing material in those beds, and then, um, reducing material around the, uh, the AC condenser units that we've agreed to, uh, to screen with a, uh, with basically a, a fence system versus just landscaping. Per the recommendation of the staff.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Do we have any other questions or comments? For Mr. Holmesley? Are we done with the staff recommendation, or are you still midway?
No, I can, uh... I can give the staff recommendation, but again, I have a... I have a, uh, I have a draft, just starting point, if we want to include any recommended changes to attach the design guidelines document related to the balcony undersides and related to that, uh, screen comment. If the planning commission is interested in doing that, I can share this.
I would like to. What about the other commissioners?
Sorry, what was the question again?
Uh, if... When it comes to the bottoms of the balconies and the, Ken mentioned this, uh, screen comment for the open stairwells, it's written almost like it's a requirement. Um, or at least it's an open-ended requirement that the zoning administrator can decide to require in the future, basically, if they feel like it.
Right.
If we wanted to make any tweaks to that. And when it comes to the internal, the internal walkways, if we want to, I don't want it, my suggestion is not to strike that requirement. If anything, my suggestion is to... If changes need to be made to that requirement, consider it a minor modification to the conditional use, so that it would still have to come back to the planning commission, but not as a public hearing when it comes to the, the paths, but that...
Oh, you're talking about the connections, pedestrian connections?
Yeah.
Yeah, because if I listen correctly, he said that you would come out the back, you would walk across, and then you would have to go down a grassy area, down a hill, to get to Iron Horse. Is that correct?
No, that's neither's on.
Well, you, you could, or you could also go out the front of the building, down the sidewalk, to one of the three access points on Iron Horse.
That's if you wanted to wa, whoops. I'll let Scott. That's if you, if you wanted to walk in, because the way, the way the plan is set up today, where the red circles are, I'm assuming it would dump out into a three-foot-deep concrete pad that's as wide as the door, maybe a little bit bigger than that. And then it, it would just dead-end, it wouldn't, the connection wouldn't go to anything. It would just be grass.
Oh, just grass?
The other connections go to the sidewalks in the parking lot. Like, you can see the sidewalk here, the sidewalk there. These are just dead-end, they don't go to anything. So as it's, as it is today, if you wanted to walk out on the side that faces the Iron Horse Trail, yeah, there'd be a, you come out, there's a little pad over the grass through a swell, uh, to the...
No, they, you'd go through the grass.
Right.
So that's great.
Ryan, Ryan Young, uh, 100 Northwards Boulevard. I think it's important to note that we are providing those four connections to Iron Horse Trail. What Mr. Holmesley has recommended is essentially providing the exact same connections that we provide on the north, on the south, um, or sorry, on the east side here. We can't provide direct connections to the Iron Horse Trail from those locations there. Like, uh, Mr. Scott, Scott Morgan had mentioned, there is, uh, three easements along that trail there, one of which being an ODOT channel easement. So we cannot provide direct connections directly from those balconies. We would have to direct them either north or south to where we already provide those connections. It's somewhat of a redundant, um, connection, because we just can't provide those direct connections across that channel.
Right.
And just declare, my recommend, the comment I had was not necessarily a direct connection to the Iron Horse Trail. It was to the parking lot, to the sidewalks. The easement's still, the easement is still a challenge.
Right.
No, I, I get that, but this is like, one of the other things here is that my understanding of it was, and I think some of the others, is that by making those pedestrian connections, that we were looking to get those out to Iron Horse Trail.
It was just to get them to another paved surface on the site, like to the parking lot. And the, again, the main idea was to, if someone can't get through the other side, they're in, I mean, they're in a wheelchair, and they, the other side is open, right now, it would just dump out into the grass. Which, I think it technically, I don't know about the, all the building code requirements, I'm not an architect, but that was the thought behind the idea, was not to get a six more connections directly to the Iron Horse Trail, because that, yes, that'd be very redundant.
So help me understand again, what are, what are we asking? If, if we're to say that, yes, we want internal pedestrian connections from two sides of those units, do they then need to be connected to another walkway, then, taking us back to the, the rest of the... Like, for instance, what's being shown here, going left and right along, just go down to Iron Horse, whatever, Building B, Building F?
This one.
Yeah.
I mean, the... There's a sidewalk right here.
Yep.
The idea was just to get it to the sidewalk, the nearest sidewalk on the site, not directly to the Iron Horse Trail.
Right.
Okay.
But that would be paved, right, that access?
That's what he's saying, yeah.
Yeah, because right, I mean, right now, it's, it'll be grass.
Right.
Some sort of landscaping area.
What you're saying, we should, I understand what you're saying, we should recommend that it be a paved access to that parking lot?
Well, back to the, to the sidewalk, to the existing, but no, it would go this way.
Yeah.
It wouldn't go to... No, and then these, I mean, those are challenging, I don't...
I don't know, personally, I don't see it. But I'm one voice, so...
And to answer your question, Chairman, that, the way that the proposal is written today is that those connections are required, and if they want to delete them, they need to come back for a public hearing. My question is, do you want to add a, add a comment that says, that deals with, so we can get more information about the trails? Keep the requirement in the document, but say that if modifications are made to the trails and the foundation landscaping and ground-mounted equipment, it can come back as a minor change to the planning commission? Because we don't have, I got the information about the trails this afternoon.
So you're saying?
Give them some leeway.
Just make it so they don't have to come back for a public hearing. Still have to come back to the planning commission, just as a minor change.
Right.
Because we, we don't have, I, I don't feel like we have enough information to make a fully educated decision on those items. And I have a, I have a draft written here that it says, "If, if any changes are proposed to the requirements of the development and design, design guidelines document contained in attachment E concerning foundation landscaping, internal pedestrian connections, and the screening of the ground-mounted utility equipment of the right-of-way-facing elevations, such changes shall be reviewed in accordance with the requirements of Section 1153 dot 11 amendments to conditional use approvals of the Kettering zoning code." Which may be considered minor changes.
I'm trying to, I'm scratching my memory, Tom. Has the planning commission ever done something like that before? Just had a minor change and say, "Come back later and get that approval at a later date"?
Uh, yes. It, it was, used to be very common with, uh, planned unit developments, for sure.
Okay.
That you, you approve a conceptual development plan, and that's what it is, is a conceptual development plan, not the final plan. So as they get through the working drawings and they find that, you know, something might be different, we have different categories of insignificant change, uh, minor change, or a significant change. Insignificant, uh, nothing, it's, it's okay, staff can approve it.
Okay.
Sometimes then with a minor change, then it just may have to come back to the, like Ryan suggested, come back to the planning commission, but without a public hearing.
Right.
If it's a major change, then it would require a full public hearing.
Right, okay, I just... Been a long time, I can't remember doing that before, but, okay.
We haven't done that for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, based on what you said then, I guess I'm okay with leaving it in here, but, uh, making the revision so that it is, would be a minor revision. If, as staff gets information about what it is... If you're going to speak, you need to come to the lectern, sorry.
Just a change in the walk location?
Well, just...
Like, if it's, if we come back for minor modification, what does it actually, what constitutes a minor modification? If it's like, a different location, or is it...
Well, if it's a different location of the existing paths, no. If, if you want to delete the, the requirement that you provide pass entirely, that'd be a minor change.
Okay.
So, because the, our code pretty clearly lays out what a major change is. It's like, it mostly relates to if you're adding a bunch more residential units or you're paving a big area that brings the use really much closer to residential development, uh, residential use nearby. Deleting those, I mean, I, I would like to have more information on it, and more information about how it would affect the foundation landscaping and the utility screens, because we have some, a couple of sentences of information about it, but we don't have a lot of information. And I feel like...
Understand.
So...
So can we word, write that into the, I'm sorry?
I have a...
Go ahead.
I have a...
I, I would agree with what you're saying, Ryan. Uh, also, for the record, this particular item was not on the initial report that we went over last week in our last commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ryan, you have wording to, uh, address this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It would be...
Right, I think we just put in minor change in accordance, but, well, I would read it all out.
Did you address anything that lady said?
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's us.
All right.
Okay.
Before we make a motion, can I ask about the, Mrs., um, McDaniel, I think her name was, that gave the questions and concerns about cyclists? I know that's not for us to, to look at. Don't you think this needs to go to somebody else to take a look at the entire area for cyclists, not just this unit?
Yes, um, but just, oh, they're not, um... Bike, uh, bike pass and those kind of connections are going to be discussed with the comprehensive plan update. And we also have then the, the Kettering Bike, Bike Committee, I guess is what they're called, that continuously look at paths and safety issues related to the bike pass around the city. And then Engineering Department takes those recommendations, and as, as they're fixing roads or repaving roads, they will add things on those for, for bike safety.
Yeah, I have to admit, I, I got a little blindsided by that. I, that should have been outside the scope of this public hearing, but we didn't know that.
Well, that's okay, I mean, it is, it's another, it's another place where traffic's going to interact with the path.
And she uses, obviously, her family uses that area. So I can see that, but I would like to see this go further where it needs to be addressed. I don't want her to necessarily feel like she wasn't heard, because she is.
Yeah, our, our engineering department has been involved in the review from the beginning. So I have several copies of the handout that she brought in.
Thanks.
And I'll, we can share it with engineering, and I think they're doing, I mean, we're working on our comprehensive plan now. Something that comes out of that could potentially be a future active transportation plan of some sort. But I don't, I don't know all the engineering requirements of the state.
Yeah, but plus, what I'll do is, is I'll take all these comments and I will just incorporate those into the public comment, uh, portion of the comprehensive plan, which is, we're taking comments right now, so...
Thank you.
Good place for it, yep, yep. And now, um... Do we have all of the staff recommendations now?
Yeah, I, I can give the recommendation that went out in the staff report, and then I gave a template, you don't have to follow it exactly, um, to Don, but I'll go through the staff recommendation, and then the planning commission wants to add, we can.
Okay, and then we'll close the public hearing part.
Yes. All right, so...
Mr. Holmesley?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. The staff recommendations is that the planning commission motion to approve the conditional use, case number, uh, PC dash two-five dash zero-zero-five with the following conditions. Uh, number one, the applicant shall submit plans for the development that meet the development and design guidelines contained in attachment E of the staff report for this case. Again, the case number, PC dash two-five dash zero-zero-five. This must be done prior to the issuance of any zoning permits or approvals for this project. And the Kettering zoning administrator shall determine if the plans comply with the guidelines. Number two, the applicant agrees that should future plan submissions for this project not comply with the development and design guidelines contained in attachment E, uh, then a new conditional use hearing shall be conducted by the planning commission. And then finally, number three, the applicant shall coordinate with and adhere to any modifications recommended by the city engineer and/or fire marshal related to public utilities, roadway modifications, site access grading, site distance, stormwater management, and emergency access to the site. That is, and I want to, uh, the, the reiteration of the type of use and the, and the case number was based on discussion. We should write motions from our legal team, so...
Fair.
If, why are you reading the motion, you're questioning that, that's why that's in there.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Holmesley.
And if I can pipe in before we close the public hearing. So, um, on sort of one of the proposed changes here, as it was regarding those, uh, public access points, basically, what I'm going to intend to read, and if anybody has to object, that's fine, but basically, it would be to, um, say, yeah, there, it's there. If they want to propose changes, it would come back as a minor change and would not require a public hearing. Uh, another one that I think's out there yet is the finishing of the bottom of the balconies. I think what's in the document as a sort of flush, and I think there was a request or whatever, whether we would just want to stain the bottoms of the, uh, the existing structure a dark color or whatever, so I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel about that.
Well, one of the, um... Items that they showed, one was finished, one was unfinished, and the, and the one unfinished looked pretty ratty. Then there was another one that you should put up, and it was really quite acceptable.
Those were...
In my opinion, yeah.
You're talking about these?
Yeah.
This is another vision development. These pictures were provided by the applicant. This is an example in the design guidelines report.
And after that.
But this is more what they're proposing as an alternative to enclosing them. Where you stain it the same color, uh, dark color, if it's overly bright, it stands out a lot more. But that would help mitigate the concern about an unfinished look. Been to some developments and they don't finish the bottom, it looks kinda, doesn't look that great. and they don't finish the bottom, it looks kinda, doesn't look that great, and there is also a benefit to being able to see the, to see the structure, just for long-term maintenance.
Yeah.
Tell-
I'm okay with them not being enclosed.
Okay with just the painting?
Open.
Yeah, as long as they look as good as these do.
Does that give a place for, you know, bats and things like that, to build nests underneath the balconies when it's open?
Are you for bats or against bats, right?
I'm kind of against bats.
I'm not a bat expert, I don't know, I, I don't want to give any bad information. I know they go wherever they can, I mean, they're, they eat a lot of mosquitoes, so they're not all bad, but.
Yeah, boy.
Scott, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Public hearing's still open, just go to the podium.
Please do.
I think the one good thing is that if they are exposed, again, property management makes rounds multiple times a day, hornets' nests, birds' nests.
See all that.
Bats.
Right.
Can easily be visually seen and then taken care of.
Right.
Long-term, we feel that keeping that cavity open on the underneath will allow rainwater to basically weep away from the whole structure versus potentially getting, even if it's perforated, eliminating any kind of long-term standing water, that would eventually create rot and structurally not be a good thing for, for anybody, so.
Okay, those are good points.
Thank you.
All right, the, the third item was the thing that Ken brought up regarding the, the open stairwells, and was it the screening, or the options, or the, the requirement? Where was that at?
Standard D, it's on page fifteen.
Thank you.
Toward the top.
There we go. And you're saying if we just struck that, that that would also, they have opportunities in a difference?
Well, alternative ideas, standard D, is just a really general item.
So if we were to strike D, then that takes out any sort of question about somebody coming back later on saying, well, we need them now, and then this, under alternative ideas, if they come up with something else?
Yeah, I, I do think that, based on discussion, it's worthwhile on the west side to potentially look into some more substantial screens for weather, better weather protection, but.
Okay.
Again, the way that's written today, I can understand concerns about arbitrary-
It's pretty open.
-arbitrary enforcement of that. I still think it's worthwhile to design them that way, but that's their choice to do that.
Okay. Thoughts, do we want to strike D, or?
Well, I'm kind of thinking of leaving it in, for the very same reason, in the future, but, see what the other commissioners think?
I'm ambivalent.
I would say probably leave it in too, I'm not sure it means much, but I-
Okay, we'll, we'll leave it, that's less work for me.
I said I was ambivalent.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's going to mean much, but I'd just leave it in.
All right.
Okay.
All right, well, those were the, the outstanding items that I saw, in addition to what?
One quick, I just want to add, one quick thing about the screen comment, keeping it in is fine, just, it might limit the ability, like if you have to design it to accommodate a screen, it might limit somewhat the ability to do other things with the openings, because I'm assuming that if you have a screen, you have to make the opening maybe a little bit bigger, because the screen will block some of that thirty-five square foot opening requirement, that's the, that's the one concern I would have, as we've talked about it more, but.
Could they come back at a later date and say, we're not proposing the screen, but we're going to propose X, Y, Z instead? Could they still do that?
You could add that to the standard four comment, where it just would be minor. That's what I, if you want to keep the idea in, I would do that, so it'd at least be a simple-
Foundation landscaping, internal- All right, what I'm thinking of doing here is to that, before earlier, where we're lumping things into a minor change, sort of after, and the screen of ground mounted utility equipment of right away facing elevations and screening of the open stairwell, so we'll just sort of add that in line, so that if changes want to be made, then no public hearing comes back, it would be minor changes, similar to the other stuff, new information.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sound good?
I think so. Commissioners, what do you think?
I think so.
Yeah, real good.
Do you want to see if anybody else in the audience has anything before we close the public hearing?
Let's see, do we, excuse me, do we have any other, any other comments from the, anybody in the audience? Before we close the public hearing? Okay, well, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, who got it?
Who got it?
Carol gets it.
Carol gets it, okay. Mr. Holmesy, would you call the roll?
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
And Mr. Waskey?
Yes. Now, Mr. Rethman has a motion.
I do, Mr. Chair, I have a motion for the Research Boulevard, which is a conditional use approval, whereas an application, case number PC dash two five dash zero zero five, has been received from Scott Morgan of Vision Companies, agent for the owner of the subject property on Research Boulevard, requesting approval of a conditional use to allow for the establishment of a multi-unit thirteen-plus units residential development on the property at the northwest corner of the intersection of County Line Road and Research Boulevard. And whereas the property is zoned BP Business Park and multi-unit thirteen-plus units uses are allowable, conditional uses in that zoning district, and can be approved through a public hearing process with the planning commission. And whereas no inherent right exists to receive conditional use approval, and mere compliance with the general applicable requirements may not be sufficient to obtain approval. And whereas in reviewing any conditional use, the planning commission shall ensure that the use is appropriate and can be accommodated on the specific property, that it can be constructed and operated in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding land uses and overall character of the community, and that the public interest, health, safety, and well, general welfare will be promoted by granting conditional use approval. And whereas in approving any conditional use, the planning commission may impose reasonable conditions or requirements in addition to any standards specified in the Kettering zoning code, as it may deem necessary to protect the public interest and welfare. And whereas the planning commission has reviewed the facts surrounding this request, including an oral and written report by city staff, which is incorporated herein, and held public hearings on May nineteen, twenty twenty-five, and June second, twenty twenty-five. And whereas this request constitutes approval of a new conditional use to allow for the establishment of a multi-unit thirteen-plus units use on the property at the northwest corner of the intersection of County Line Road and Research Boulevard. And whereas the planning commission adopts the findings of fact presented by staff in their staff report, the staff report of which is incorporated into this motion as if it fully rewritten herein, I move that the applicant's request for approval of a new conditional use to allow for the establishment of a multi-unit thirteen-plus use, thirteen-plus units use on the property at the northwest corner of the intersection of County Line Road and Research Boulevard be granted with the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall submit plans for the development that meet the development and design guidelines contained in attachment E of the staff report for this case, PC dash two five dash zero zero five. This must be done prior to the issuance of any zoning permits or approvals for the project. The City of Kettering zoning administrator shall determine if the plans comply with these guidelines. Number two, the applicant agrees that should future plan submissions for this project not comply with the development and design guidelines contained in attachment E of the staff report for this case, PC dash two five dash zero zero five, then a new conditional use hearing shall be conducted by the planning commission. The applicant shall coordinate with, and, oh, number three, the applicant shall coordinate with and adhere to any modifications recommended by the city engineer and/or fire marshal related to public utilities, roadway modifications, site access, grading, site distance, storm water management, and emergency access to the site. And, number four, if any changes are proposed to the requirements of the development and design guidelines document contained in attachment E of the staff report for this case, PC dash two five dash zero zero five, concerning foundation landscaping, internal pedestrian connections, and the screening of ground mounted utility equipment of right away facing elevations, and screening of the open stairwells, such changes shall, shall be reviewed as a minor change in accordance with the requirements of section eleven fifty-three point eleven amendments to conditional use approvals of the Kettering zoning code. Additionally, I move that the following changes be made to attachment E, development and design guidelines for the staff report of, for this case, PC dash two five dash zero zero five. Number one, modify the section relating to the enclosing of the undersides of the balconies to read as stain the bottoms of the apartment balconies the same color as the balcony columns and skirt boards, the color of the stain shall be a dark color. This concludes my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rethman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Carol seconded.
Carol seconded?
All right, Mr. Rethman?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Lackey?
Yes.
And Mr. Waskey?
Yes. The last item on the agenda is audience participation.
They were here to learn about the vision project, so.
Oh, oh, all right, so, seeing none, um, let's turn to-
He can't hear. Is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we have, last item on the agenda is audience participation, seeing no one in the audience, other than the applicants, we'll go on to other business, signing of plates, Mr. Holmesy?
Uh, there are none tonight.
Communication and reports.
None tonight.
Uh, just one, that the, um, community block party that we have annually is Wednesday evening, so you're certainly all invited, uh, the whole community is invited, so it's usually a very big turnout, uh, the planning and development booth, we are hosting public comments and input to the comprehensive plan, so if you're so inclined, stop by and say hi and add some more comments.
And what time is that, Mean Hill?
It is at six, six to eight.
Six to eight.
Yep.
Sounds good.
In Lincoln Park.
Thank you.
That, that reminds me, I, I'll be forwarding, uh, we have, we're trying to get more survey information back from the general public as a part of the comprehensive plan.
Uh-huh.
And I believe I sent a link to that a while ago when we had our first open house, but I'll, I'll send another one, because, and by all means, share it with any other residents you know, and pressure them to do it in the survey.
Sure.
With your authority as a planning commission member to-
Yeah, one, one thing we're finding is that we're getting a lot of hits, a lot of people are looking at the page, but not very many people are leaving comments. Like, there's been almost four hundred people clicking on the page, but I don't know how many comments we've got, but.
There's been like twenty-three people who have provided comments, and some have provided more than one, so sixty-some comments, but we want to get as much feedback as we can, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
I guess that probably means people are happy.
Yes.
Satisfied.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you'd hear about it.
We, we got a lot of input at the open house, I was pretty surprised how busy that was, not complaining, but after the fact, I expected to get more through the online sources, but yeah, I'm sure that there's, unfortunately, people who want to, people who are frustrated tend to be more likely to respond to things like that, but, so.
So take it as a positive, but yes, I'll pressure everybody I know.
Thank you.
Good. Finally, planning commission comments.
I have none.
I don't have anything.
Nothing.
Nope.
None, I have none either. So, our next regularly scheduled, tentatively scheduled meeting is for Monday, June sixteenth at seven PM, and this meeting is closed, I don't have a gavel, so the time is?
It is eight forty-seven.
Eight forty-seven PM Eastern.